Ms. Marshall. Any discussion? Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. Did Mr. Cooney give a reason why he's not available?
Yeah, he mentioned that.
Thank you. I'm just to note, unfortunately, he's been present fifty-nine percent of the meetings and absent for forty-one percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Is there any further discussion on this matter?
Mr. Ryan?
Yes, it's one.
Vice Mayor, was there anything further outside of personal? Is that urgency? Pardon, a personal urgency? Okay.
Thank you. I'm aware of the reason of Mr. Cooney's absence, and though I don't believe I've ever given share, I do believe it is excusable. So, I'd ask that you do the customary thing and excuse Mr. Cooney. Is there any further discussion? Same then, Mrs. Thomas, we call over.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Zett?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Robb?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Next is the reading and disposal of the journal. I'm sorry, thank you. The next is the clutching allegiance of this journal.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Lift on the most obvious thing. Very good. Next item then is the reading and disposal of the journal. We do have a seven minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion? So, we have a motion to approve the minutes of November twenty, twenty, excuse me, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, the motion's by Ms. Wise, her second by Mrs. Wise, a discussion of the motion. There were some corrections, but I think we had those already?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. If there's no discussions, Mrs. Thomas, we call over.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Zett?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Robb?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Very good motion carries. Next is additions and removals from the agenda and referrals to committee. Are there any additions or removals for referrals? And if I may, as Chair, I'd like to make a suggestion that we take an item out of order and the Chair be happy to obtain a motion considered at this time Resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash seven. Is there a motion?
Seven.
Okay, motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
No, second.
I'll take the second for Mr. King, thank you. And Mrs. Thomas, we call over.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Zett?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Robb?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, very good motion carries, where we'll immediately address the subject of the Resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash seventy, which was item on the agenda Resolution twenty-two thirty-three dash seventy, a joint proclamation and resolution recognizing the Jazoo School Varsity Football Team. I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution for the benefit of the team and the family members who are here and for the general public. A joint proclamation resolution recognizing the Jazoo School Varsity Football Team. Whereas on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, Jazoo varsity student athletes Peter King, Carter Wick, William Quayle, T.J. Salata, Jack Fabrit, Jacob Curtis, Ryan Foss, Natalie Costas, Jerry Labelle, Alan Masters, Patrick McLaughlin, Tyler McMillan, Mason Mostella, Patrick Murphy, John Berlendo, Grady Parnin, Carter Penny, Joe, uh, Oz Lesny, Bobby Rhodes, Tommy Salata, Brian Shipley, Teddy Spear, Kevin Tebow, Matthew Vitale, and Zach Workman won the twenty-twenty-three CYO Diocesan Championship. And whereas the Jazoo Varsity Football Team has won the CYO Diocesan Championship for the first time since nineteen ninety-one, their seventeenth football title overall in a dominating twenty-four to nothing, says twenty-four to zero, win over Saint Hillary Fairlon, avenging Jazoo's only regular season loss to Saint Hillary in this title game and finishing the season with a record of eight and one. And whereas the Bulldogs had an historic season with the offense outscoring their opponents two-twenty-six to sixty-five and the defense recording five shutouts demonstrating a met skill, commitment, and hard work for not only the twenty-twenty-three CYO Diocesan Championship, but for the entirety of the twenty-twenty-three season. And whereas the Bulldogs started the championship game in a hurry-up offense and scored on the third play of the game on a sixty-five-yard touchdown pass from quarterback T.J. Salata to running back Tyler McMillan, kicker Jacob Curtis, who was perfect on the day, kicked his first of three two-point PATs, and the Bulldogs led eight to zero. After a three-and-out from the Bulldogs' defense led by middle running back Carter Wick, the offense struck again on a twenty-five-yard quarterback draw from Salata down the left sideline. The Jazoo offensive line of Wick, William Quayle, Ryan Foss, Carter Penny, Ryan Foster, and Bobby Rhodes cleared the way for the touchdown. Curtis' second kick was good, and the score was sixteen to zero Bulldogs at the half. The defense continued to lock down Saint Hillary's high-powered offense behind great tackling from defensive backs Peter King, Grady Parnin, and Patrick McLaughlin, outstanding linebacker play from Wick, McMillan, Teddy Spear, Kevin Tebow, Brian, or Patrick Murphy, and the Jack, and Jack Fabrit, and up-front pressure from defensive line and Quayle, Foss, Rhodes, Penny, Zach Workman, and Brad Shipley. On Jazoo's first offensive possession of the third quarter, Salata dropped back once again to pass, this time connecting with running back Jack Fabrit on a perfectly executed corner route for a fifty-yard score. Curtis was once again good on the kick, and the Bulldogs closed out the scoring with a twenty-four to zero advantage. And whereas Jazoo Schools football coaches Chris Salata, Ronnie King, Mark, uh, Tebow, to be all, Brian Rhodes, Matt Parnin, John Fabrit, Matt McDonald, and Brian McLaughlin guided these young men towards this championship, now therefore be it jointly proclaimed by the Mayor and resolved by the City Council of the City of University Heights, Ohio, that one, Section One, the City of University Heights recognizes the Jazoo School Varsity Team and honors their accomplishments in the twenty-twenty-three season. Section Two is hereby found that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the council, and that all deliberations of this council and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance of all legal requirements. Section Three, this resolution shall take effect at the earliest time allowed by law. Go Bulldogs! The City of University Heights. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Seven.
Motion by Mrs. Sacks, is her second. Second by Mr. Robb. Any discussion of the motion?
Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Wise.
Maybe the Brown should look at that.
Any other discussion? All right, very good. Mrs. Thomas, we call over.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Zett?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Robb?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Very good. We have two copies here that we're going to execute, one for us to keep, one to give you. What brand is we're going to pass this around? And sign them. We do have one member absent, so the copy that we'll be giving to Jazoo, we will deliver on later date, but we would like to have everyone sign this and perhaps get together for a crew fixture, the team, and, you know, those of us up here on the table, so if we can arrange that, that would be, I think, appropriate and celebratory if that's fine with you.
They're smiling. Good, there we go. Go Bulldogs!
I think it's all about the shirts and the colors.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
So are there any other additions, removals, or referrals? And if not, we will move on to comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. If you'd like to address the seat this evening, please come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you may take up to five minutes to address the seat. Seeing none, we will then move on to reports and communications from the Mayor and taking of action thereon. I open with an update on University Square. Last week, an agreement was reached by the parties, the Stocking House, or, excuse me, the Stocking Horse purchaser, K.O. Holdings, advised the court that it had consented to a three-day extension of the sale. The new schedule for the sale of University Square is set by the Bank of Support is as follows. The bid deadline is now January tenth, twenty twenty-four. Auction, in the event of any qualified bidders, in addition to the Stocking Horse, is January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Objections to sale are January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Then the sale hearing, at which confirmation sale would presumably be had, is January thirtieth, twenty twelve. I turn now to the twenty-twenty-four budget. I am working with the Finance Director and the several Department Heads on the city's budget for twenty twenty-four. This will be released in January twenty twenty-four, with plenty of time to pass the budget before the end of March. The administrative departments will not be releasing any budgetary information in preview or otherwise in advance of the complete administrative budget in accordance with the city charter. The University Heights City Beautiful CIC will meet this Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-three, from seven PM to eight PM here at Wiley Middle School here in this room. The agenda generally is to schedule our meetings for next year and discuss the adoption of a public records policy. We've had our first big snow of the year on November twenty-eighth. That snow is already gone, but while it was here, our Service Department had declared most of the snow fell right before rush hour. Our crews were up before seven AM clearing the snow. Our thanks to Service Director Alan Pangton and the Service Department employees for getting us through our first snow of the season. The first snow is always tricky because we address it with limited equipment, as certain trucks are outfitted for leaf pickup instead of snow removal, and as soon as the snow is clear to get right back on leaves. For anyone wondering, we are on our fourth pass around the city for leaf pickup. Thank you. This concludes my report. Next, we have reports and communications from the City Council and the taking of action thereon. Mrs. Wise?
Yes, it's unfortunate that the budget will not be, that the Mayor has not allowed Directors to speak to the Finance Committee regarding their needs and wants for the budget. The past six years, as a Finance Chair, I have called a meeting with Directors, the Lay Finance Committee, and City Council members to discuss the department's needs at once. The purpose of this meeting, we need so council is prepared to review the budget in a timely and malleable manner. I first had a call for this meeting in September. This is typically when the budget cycle begins. I was told by the Mayor in an email that he wants the budget cycle to begin after the election, since he feels there will be four new council members. In the spirit of compromise, I acquiesced. Well, that's not the case. There are not four new council members. I requested another call to schedule a Directors' meeting regarding the budget, and the Mayor basically threatened the Directors in an email to discipline them of insubordination if they attend, even though the Law Director opined that Directors should attend council committee meetings if requested. Again, this has been standard practice over the last six years, which the Mayor has agreed to, and no council member, or thereafter, is making any budgetary decisions until the Mayor submits a draft budget for council to approve. It's simply attaining crucial information so the budget process is not rushed. Now the council is left to rush a delicate budget cycle by March thirty-first, which is a date for exceptions. Twelve thirty-one is the deadline. An election is not an exception to delay the budget. I have asked to sit down with the Mayor before he presents the budget, which he has ignored. I was hoping his call for communication and collaboration after the election was truthful. I'm afraid it was not. I would be proposing an ordinance with a timeline for a draft budget by any Mayor in a future meeting, so as not to handicap any future councils.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Wise. Are there any other reports from the council? All right. I will reserve comment on Mrs. Wise's comments for another time. We will propose the budget in January. I will be following the charter with respect to this. I have objected to this in the past. I'm putting my foot down this year. We will not have the budget reviewed piece meal. The administration will present one united budget. There will be more than adequate time to go over the budget in January. Yes?
May I note that Section C, uh, Section Four of the Mayor's duties, which you quoted in the email to Mrs. Wise, that was also shared with council? You only share part of that, not all of that. There is that sentence ends with "and shall at all times keep the council fully advised as to the financial condition and needs of the city." I would think that needs of the city, we can request and get when we need them, and I also do believe that under Ohio law, that a request by a council for information should be followed, which apparently you do not wish to do. And I'd like to ask the Law Director if the ORC is a pile of law?
Yes.
Okay. And if I or any elected official should choose to do something other than what is contained in that law, would we be in violation of the laws of the State of Ohio?
Well, I, I don't want to be cagey. I think the answer to that can vary based on things like whether there's a charter and provision that's applicable or what the circumstances are. But in general terms, yes. I, I would comment that I stand by my legal opinion. My legal opinion is absolutely correct in this matter. The, um, the Directors are obligated to meet with council members upon council members making that request. That is a matter that is established in Ohio law. There is nothing in the University Heights Charter that is in contravention of that. The provision that the Mayor has cited creates a duty of the Mayor to propose a budget to council. It does not in any other way exert control over council's ability to get information from their Directors. There is no time limit placed on the presentation of a budget by the Mayor. So, under the Mayor's analysis, he could present you the budget on March thirty-first and never look the Department Heads available to you, period. That's an absurdity. The reality is that the law is clear on this subject, clear. You have the right to cause Directors to attend your meetings. I think it is shameful, shameful, that Directors are being put in this position and threatened with discipline. And all of the elected officials need to put that consideration at the top of their list. The Department Heads do not deserve to be treated this way, period.
I have one final question for you. If someone wished, who wished to file that there has been a breach of Ohio law, would they file it with our Police Department or with the county?
Well, this, this is not a criminal matter. You know, this is, this is a matter that boils down to interpretation of what is civil law. I think that council has a couple of avenues of recourse. One is to enact legislation that further clarifies to the extent there's ambiguity. I really don't think there is, but to the extent there's ambiguity, you could pass legislation that further clarifies the matter. Your other option would be to hire outside counsel to file a mandamus action, which is in fact an action that would be brought to cause an elected official to do their duty. I will not be able to participate in that. I would have a conflict of interest, and would have to approach outside counsel and then bring that penalty of election.
Thank you. I'll save the rest of my comments for when we discuss the appointments regarding the budget.
There were several things that you brought up that you asked me. And I'll go ahead and answer that. We do keep the council regularly apprised, as the Financial Commission said. Mr. Kennedy does regularly provide financial reports with regard to where the city stands. Our administration has historically done that, I think done that rather well, and legal force continue to do that. With regard to filing a mandamus action or some other action, we will be submitting our budget in January. And I do not think that you should want to take the time to, to file a legal action because something you're going to be getting anyway. We're not prohibiting council, excuse me, we're not prohibiting Directors from attending a Finance Committee as much as we are in our discretion making them available at the time that we go ahead and submit the budget. This is something that's been a point of contention every year, and this is the year I'm putting my foot down on. The Mayor introduces the budget, we're going to introduce the budget. We're not going to have competing Department wish lists separate from the administration's budget. We will present the budget, and council will then do as it will to consider it.
Mayor, in your email, you clearly state, "It is my intention that I will shortly refer my direct order to all Department Heads not to provide Department budgets or to discuss Department budgets with council or anyone else outside of myself or the Finance Director in advance of the formal transmission of the budget by my office to City Council."
That's right.
Now, if they come to a council Finance Committee meeting by this, you are preventing them from answering any question that I might ask.
Correct.
That deals with the things.
Correct. So that, that is not, that is not applicable under law. I disagree. Well, you're wrong. Well, I think you're right.
And what else?
Well, I am, I am as well. You're wrong, and I know that. I know that. I'm sorry we didn't have a discussion about this before the sequence meeting. I had before we rented your.
And finally, I would finish with the threat for the record. I will advise, this is a form by the Mayor, I will advise anyone who disregards my orders may be subject to discipline for insubordination. Per the handbook, insubordination is a group-free offense, and it is subjects the offending employee to discipline starting with a fifteen-day suspension up to termination on a first offense. That is a threat. That's a threat to Department Heads to tell them, "You can't answer any question that someone might ask you." And Mayor, you have pushed it in response to a citizen question on your mayor's page. Oh, the council knows what I want in the budget? They only have to go to the State of the City address. So this magic budget that apparently you have not bothered to put together yet, which could have been put together well in advance, so we could actually have taken care of it last month, that budget hearings last month, and had it completed when it should be completed by the end of December, instead of having to pass continuing ordinance to cover, well, you finally decided to do it, that's not appropriate. And we should be able to have some sense of what departments need, so when the budget comes in, we can actually work on it intelligently. It is not budget process, it's not a matter of, here, go approve it. You seem to believe that, but that is not the process of democracy, and you know that full well. If you're going to sit there and talk to people about being democratic, try being democratic.
We've done the budget two different ways. We've done the budget where we proposed it before the end of the year, we've passed it once before the end of the year. Historically and generally, we consider the budget into the new year. Having done it both ways, I tend to prefer the second. It's traditionally how we've done it at University Heights. I've been through minutes of my predecessors. This has been done like this at least since the nineteen sixties. This is typically how it's done. It's how I'm going to continue to do it. I don't think, I, I went ahead and let you go ahead and call me anti-democratic and so on. That's, you know, that's very welcome, welcome to your opinion. But what we're doing is orderly process. What we're doing is working together. We're using this time to work with the Finance Director, we're approved Department Heads to come up with a coherent, complete budget, rather than trying to do that at the same time that you're trying to have them prepare for various committee meetings and have testified budget documents that are incomplete. That has provided be chaotic in the past, that has provided, it was chaotic in the last budget process, even when we did it earlier in the year, you took my balanced budget and made it a deficit budget when that was unnecessary. And I didn't appreciate it, especially among the campaign trail. All I heard was, was how the Mayor proposed
All I heard was how the mayor proposed his deficit budgets, and yet, the deficit budget we had last year was because this council made the deficit budget. So, we're going to go ahead and propose a budget for the city, we're going to do it in January, you're going to be able to talk to the directors about, you know, about their department's budgets. Nobody's going to be disallowed to talk with anybody, except that we're going to do this in orderly fashion. And, you know, as we determined by the administration, the list of things, I didn't quote foolish, you're right, but the list of duties are duties that are exclusive to the mayor throughout that section of the mayor's duties. This is one of them. The mayor's going to propose the budget, the administration's going to propose the budget, we're going to do it in January, and we're not going to wait until March 31st. Of course, that would be absurd. We're going to do it in January, you've got plenty of time to consider it. We're going to consider it, and we're going to have a good budget.
And mayor, I have been involved with the finance committee longer than you ever have, and I can tell you, every finance committee has asked every mayor to have their budget even though it is passed by the end of December, and therefore, a while, we were actually getting them out without any big thing, without any terror, without any, oh my goodness, they have to go to a committee meeting. So, history is not quite as you have made it, because I have a much longer memory in being involved with the budget process than you have.
I think we're going to spare that out differently. I've often found that to be the case of your sort of observations, Ms. Marshall. Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
So, withholding the budget and threatening the directors and keeping up with speaking with council, I feel is a huge disservice to our residents. You specifically, mayor, said that you were holding this budget because of the election, and you expected it to be a huge turnaround in city council, and one of the new city council members having to go behind the old city council. The election is long, it's over, it's done, it's over. I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed in the fact that threats are being used for people's jobs. Quite frankly, it's an abuse of authority. The fact that you're disregarding the law is abuse of authority. The behavior and actions are extremely unbecoming of a leader, and it's very embarrassing. It's very embarrassing for the city. I'm embarrassed, and you should be. We are not here for personal reasons. We need to do our job that residents have asked us to do. We waste so much time on personal stuff. This appears to be extremely personal. It has nothing. Your story changes every time you say something. Your first reason that you were steadfast on, it was about, it was going to be a big turnaround. It wasn't, and the election is over. I really would like to get back to the business of the city. I really would like to do what the residents put us here to do.
That's what we're here doing. And we're working with Mr. Kennedy, we're working with the department heads. You know, we did not work on the budget up until, you know, up through the election. We have since begun working on the budget since the election. Doesn't change the timeline that we're on regardless of the election results. We were coming out with a budget after the first of the year, that's what we're still doing, that's what we set all along.
Well, but you keep saying "we." This was always your decision, your choice, and what you said was going to happen.
Right.
You keep saying "we," this is you.
Well, it's "we," the administration, but I do not. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to say about this? All right. If there are any further reports or communications from city council, then I'll turn to the reports and communications from the directors. Department of Finance, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple items to note, more specifically for the next council meeting. I'll be bringing a proposal to renew the health insurance contract with Medical Mutual. We went through an informal bid process with help of our healthcare consultant. We presented that to the healthcare committee, comprised of members of all the collective bargaining agreement folks in the city and representatives from the administrative staff, and everyone, based on discussions and presentation from the healthcare advisor, everyone has agreed to pursue the rule that's offered by Medical Mutual. So, I will have that ready, and I would ask that when you pass on emergency in the next meeting, I just got all the authorizations over the weekend from unions, so I will get to work on that tomorrow to get that in shape to be presented at the next meeting. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Mrs. Thomas?
Thank you. Thank you for taking care of that. I'm just curious what the change is, the percentage, if any?
It's the rate based on the construction term plan is about 18%. And that's really within reason for particularly entities of our size, under 100 lives. So, the ability to negotiate is a little bit limited because of that, and our access to specific medical information. If you remember, the last two years, we had a two-year agreement with N M R. The first year went up nine and a half percent, last year went up zero percent until it was frozen. So, you're really amortizing the same three silver portion of last year and the upcoming year. We tried to get a two-year agreement this time, we were not successful, but given the cost of inflation, 18% I think is fairly realistic, and it was lower than any of the alternatives that were proposed to us by any other providers. And it doesn't change the plan. I think the change in plan would complicate things, and we'd have to probably get specific union approval, because it's going to impact folks that participate in those agreements in which everyone knows we're all just wrapped up.
Thank you.
I wondered that. Sure. Similarly, at the next meeting, I talked to Mrs. Thomas, I'll work with her to get something on. There was an amendment to the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District that the city engineer proposed that did not get on the agenda, but we need to do that and get that submitted to the sewer district before December 31st, so that will be on the agenda for the next meeting as well. And we will probably, I have yet to be with the mayor about it, but an order, each our metric also runs out 12:30 once, so if anything, we can do that, and if that were moved forward, that will be on the next agenda.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Marshall?
Mr. Kennedy, is it possible to get council copies of those warrant advices in council that no one can normally get the package? So, we have some idea what we're looking at?
Yeah, for these particular items, I have everything I need. I have one additional document we will be called your book it tomorrow, but yeah, I can see you probably...
Maybe, because if you can, definitely, if we got additional questions, we might be able to resolve them before the physical meeting, and maybe go quicker than it seems to be 12:18, that'd be interesting.
And I do already have all the information that was right by the city engineer's account. Amended agreement, I can figure getting that from the city.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Department of Law, Mr. Kennedy.
No report, mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, please.
Mayor, no report.
Thank you, chief. Public Safety, five.
No report, mayor.
Also, no report. Thank you, chief. Service Department, Mr. Pennington.
No report, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pennington. Building Department, Mr. Chie.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Chie. Housing and Community Development, Mr. Engelbrand.
No report, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Engelbrand, City Engineer. He's not here, but I have a written report that I will read. Engineers' reports. One, the Sabre water line replacement, construction is completed, working on final paperwork to close out the project. Number two, the 2023 road program, construction is completed, working on final paperwork to close out the project. Number three, Sillsby Emergency Water Main Repair. The water main has been replaced by Cleveland Water Department. Cleveland Water Department also approved the replacement of the road, full depth with a new concrete road. The replacement of the north half of the road was completed on November 30th, and the second half will be completed by December 8th. Number four, East Scarborough Camry's sanitary relief sewer, construction begins on December 4th, work will be completed by the end of the year. Number five, Kaihara County Preventive Maintenance Grant, applications are due by December 12th. We will be applying for crack ceiling of Elford and Old Hard. The county pays for the material costs, and the city covers the cost of labor, essentially a 50-50 grant. That concludes the city engineer's report.
Mayor?
Yes.
Two questions. One is, will the 2024 road repair program be presented by G P D and everybody? Who's preparing it?
That is to be determined.
And what is the status on the R F P?
I will be making an announcement on that when I've got my final recommendation.
Not just the recommendation, what's the status of, has, where have been, how's the education's been came in?
The status is, is I will be advising council once I make my recommendation.
And six months.
Yes, Ms. Marshall.
My understanding is Mr. Chie was working on the bathrooms of the park?
He was, and is.
Is it done?
No, no. We are going to be seeking a state capital grant on that, because the cost is well in excess of the annual asking.
Hmm, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Communications and Civic Engagement, Mr. Cook.
Mayor, no report.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Economic Development, Mrs. Dr. [inaudible]. No report, thank you. All right, may now go to, yes, Mr. [inaudible].
I've noticed some pattern here of no reports from any of the directors except the one who doesn't work for the city. Does that have anything to do with your email outlining that directors are not to give feedback or any, anything to council without clear determination? Because I'm noticing a pattern here. I don't see any pattern or connect that as you have.
Others have given reports.
The one who doesn't work for the city.
Many of the people not giving reports have not given reports, and other cases, and Mr. Kennedy gave a report.
It was 100%.
And Mr. Conville is not subject to what we're talking about, he gave a report.
But I'm saying 100% of the directors gave a report.
This is not a report. This isn't even part of the agenda at this point, Mr. [inaudible]. But nobody is under any...
We have a [inaudible] report, really. I would like a report. Okay. Well, absolutely. Let me ask a question. One of the directors, the last one just spoke, because we're still on [inaudible]. Do you have a question for Mrs. [inaudible]? Yeah, Mrs. [inaudible]. Give us a report, we had an economic meeting. Tell us about it. Give us a report.
Okay. Just for the record, I was not told you not to report anything, but I was, can you hear me now?
It's on my dial.
Is it on?
Yeah, it is on. That's right, thank you.
Okay. So, on Tuesday, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
I'm sorry. We did have an economic, or a Zonco update. We had, that was on the parking issue was primarily the discussion. I do want to thank Michael Cato, because he was the only person that did come from one of the other committees, which is good, they have some feedback. The report was distributed to everybody after the changes that were made in the, regarding the discussion with parking, and also warrants with some updates, which is very, because a couple of things, and actually, I debated coming up here and saying this, but now it's it. So, in the safety meeting, a comment was made to John Carroll, asking about parking in B P. And I have to say, I don't want to steal my chair, because at that meeting with Zonco, when they presented the Warrensville Road updates, I did speak out at that meeting. I wasn't sure who was on the aisle or not, but my warning to council, well, not warning, but I wanted my opinion to be known, that that is an entryway, not only for John Carroll, but also for the city of University Heights. And whatever goes on that corner is incredibly important to that development. Whatever, whatever's on that corner is going to drive both entryways. So, I understand that we are desperate for parking in John Carroll, but it's my opinion only, that corner is not it. And one of the other issues is that I have asked multiple times, if temporary parking is needed, define temporary, and I've never received a response of what temporary is. So, that alarms me, because you don't want to take a corner like B P and the, and the Mr. [inaudible] and make that a parking lot, because it's just such a primary corner for retail, for both entryways, it's just very important. Obviously, you have an issue that's coming up on, Monday, Wednesday, at the plant, no, Thursday, at the planning commission meeting. That is an issue. I did reach out to all council members. Mr. King, I know, or Council King, I know you opened the email, but I did not have the opportunity to speak to you about those issues. I'm just putting some proposals that are not necessarily public at the time, we're not public record, but they also print into a secondary session. It's a [inaudible] and I like to go back and forth about secondary session items. But I want to put some items on the radar, one of those have to come forward. Two days later, I reached out to council, which is the proposal for a rezoning on Wednesday, or Thursday, for four parcels in a marginal center road, for a, from across America, and that is possibly to relocate a, a B P station at that site. Anything else? Nothing else is happening with any of the projects? I'm trying to think. Um, I want to give you a report. Any ones at the meeting that came up?
A D U's. We talked about A D U's.
Oh, man, yes, I knew there's... So, the other discussion was A D U's, and there were proposals about four, five different sites that we were given, or selections or options, and then those discussions, does the, would the ordinance be written that it would just allow A D U's? Would it be written so that it would need to go through committees? It was, I thought it was a really good discussion with Zonco this past week, and they will be then taking the calibration, taking those discussion points, and coming back, I believe he said it was going to be in the winter, so I'm expecting around February or March, and don't hold me to that, but I'm just, I knew it was going to take a couple of months. But those were the primary discussion points. John Carroll was president of media at Zonco, because parking was an issue, and we do have to get some kind of long-term solution for that, for that issue. Other than that, any other projects? Lefty still hasn't opened, the whole permits. The Locktique daycare was purchased, that building was purchased by someone else. They have not submitted permits or any application at this point in time, but the building has been purchased. And I do know there is someone who is interested in creating another daycare. Again, I didn't report on this, because I had told all of, everyone I counseled, but I want to make sure a couple of days is here. I will entertain any questions if I can't get anything else.
Very good.
Ms. Marshall?
And it's very cold back there. Yes, I'm not going to, maybe I should, but no, it's very cold back there.
Very exploratory of us, and you bring up a good point about the B P, and yeah, we're under pressure from residents about parking. Effectively screened and definitely noted as temporary, do you think that would be a potential, you know, would that, would that help to abs some of your concerns? I mean, I understand what you're saying, which with parking, and they want to keep it forever, but on a limited basis and with appropriate screening, would that sort of lower your objection to that? Just out of curiosity.
Here's why I don't like that. If parking goes there, then it tells me there's no other development going, that there's no plan, and we've been told we're supposed to have a plan. And yes, the original plan went down, there's interest rates, there's issues in financing, but to me, if you're going to put parking, then it tells me you don't have that bigger plan that council has promised, that the administration was promised, which led to the field house being built and a parking lot being removed. That's why it alarms me.
Makes sense, thank you.
And it just, that circle, we, that circle is just so prime for development, and it would just, to me, it would look terrible to just have to park, and you have to ask yourself... And you have to ask yourselves, how many parking spots can you get on this? How many can you get? Right? And so is that worth it? Number one, will that fix your problem? Because if it doesn't, and there's still parking on the streets, now you have a parking lot on Fairmount, and you still have the same problem with parking that you have today. So that's, that's a big question. So I would ask that, how many parking spots? Is this going to resolve the problem? The answer is going to be no. And, and it's not worth it. And where's the silver development? Where is the skate wave project? And if you're not going to build it, then, then maybe we focus on a development that's going towards, that's our entryway. And, and as you recall too, at the meeting, I brought up that there was, there was a developer who approached the city about eighteen months or two years ago about creating these corners, developing the corners along Warrensville Sun Road, and you have something going on in the mid-block. And it, and it matched what ZONCO was talking about. So I did reach out to that developer, and I'm meeting with him this week, because I want him to be aware of it. We have now a consultant that's proposing this. Your idea was right along that way. So when I have, when I'm talking to people like that, and their potential, I just think we want to be careful what we do at that corner.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as long as we're on the subject of parking, I know that Jeremiah Swetl mentioned the subject that possibly floated, I think, you know, here before this council, or the council committee, rather, the tribal, tearing down six houses on Milford to create surface parking. I've told him repeatedly that not only does the administration not support that, but I anticipate the council would either. But moreover, the idea that we would tear down six houses for surface parking is one of the lowest forms of land use that we can imagine. And here we're talking about community that is just under two square miles, the idea that we would, you know, there are times that we sacrifice homes for development, but that is the wrong idea, that is the wrong move. And, and, you know, obviously, as a moment, I oppose the idea of tearing down six homes on Milford to build service parking lots. There has to be another way to resolve the parking issues of John Carroll.
Well, that means, you know, we are strapped as a city to generate income tax. And so anytime something's torn down and made into a parking lot, especially something that's going to support, it's a school that can then tax exempt, it's stripping away income tax dollars from the city, and we're already stretched with how you generate more income tax. So that also, again, that, right now, that is a U seven corner, and we're talking about making it park, even if it's temporary, but it's a U seven corner, and we've got to remember that. And it's, is that for a reason. And, and if you look at here, ZONCO, they're not hearing, let's turn this into a B three. In fact, we're talking about getting rid of B threes because it's just extra parking, moreover, parked to begin with. And I just think there has to be a long-term solution with the John Carroll issue. And I know, maybe, okay, there are issues. Every, every reason why it was against was because it was financial, but that's the possibility business. You have a school, you build it, you build it. So when you build something, we've now learned, and this was brought with ZONCO, rather than say, here's how much parking we need, now build something, maybe we say, what's supposed to be built here, and then how do you park it? And that's what needs to, we need to care, be very careful.
Are there any further questions for Mrs. Drucker?
Great point.
He's great. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. We will now move on to item nine. We've already addressed letter A. We will go to letter B, ordinance 2023-71, authorizing temporary appropriations for current other expenditures of the City of University Heights, Ohio, for a period ending January one, 2024, and ending March thirty-first, 2024, declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you, Mayor. Absent a permanent budget that would be approved prior to the end of the year, we will need to approve a set of temporary appropriations for the first quarter of next year. The county and state law that applies here says that a final permanent budget has to be filed before April first, that'd be April first, 2024. Basically, this budget is designed to get us through the period of January and then in March, if necessary. For the most part, it's, it's really based on a sliding scale of twenty-five percent for things like payroll and personal service contracts. There are a couple of unique items that are in there that put the full amount in there for the year. Example, the payment for the ladder truck for the fire department is due in February. That's about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So that full amount is in the budget to represent payment. And the same thing, since we already know what our debt commitment is and that can be changed, that's in there for the full amount. But this will allow us to operate starting January first, spending monies in calendar year 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Are there any questions for Mr. Cannon? Ms. Wise.
What happens if we don't pass this?
If it's not passed prior to January first?
Yep.
Basically, the city cannot expend any funds in the current year, which would be 2024, so that would include salaries, anything that would need to be encumbered. The only thing we could pay would be any carryover, encumbered items from this year. But any new money against next year's budget, against next year's revenue, we would not be able to spend.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Cannon? Is there a motion to approve the ordinance on emergency?
Some of emergency.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on emergency by Mrs. Wise. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Robb. Any discussion? Mrs. Sacks.
Thank you. I've said it before, a year, a couple of years past, that it is mind-boggling that a budget is not prepared in advance of the fiscal year, at least to discuss it and present to be discussed. So it is, it is so unfortunate to be put in this position, Mayor, that you are put in council in a position to, I don't want to use, I don't want to call any names, but I'll just describe, I wouldn't think of withholding the salaries of our employees, and it puts us in a position to either acquiesce to your method of budgeting or not paying the salaries. And I, I resent that, and I think it's very unprofessional and inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Ms. Wise.
One thing I know, from city through multiple budget hearings, is probably the base, and Mrs. Wise could probably comment on this as well, of our city budget going forward, probably eighty percent of it, if not close to ninety percent of it is done, just based on the prior year, because there's always a rollover. Where things could tweak, there are things that might get added or expanded, and they're never, most times, so significant that they take three months to finally decide to deal with, and then decide to suddenly on January one, do it. Continuing budgets are nice, but they need, I think, to lax budgeting, because then, at the beginning of the year, with only a two-month period, a budget is getting put together, not given to council, but is being put together after January first, and then maybe gets to council at some point in January, and then forces council to have to rush budget areas, because we have to do two meetings usually, in trying to get the budget approved appropriately before the end of March, before we would be out of compliance with Ohio law. It is almost an insult to tell people, oh, I'll, I'll work on the budget in November as soon as I know I get selected, and then turn around and say, oh, no, I'm not going to wait till January, and then I don't want directors talking to you as well. And I think that is, is sad. It's sad. In the campaign, the residents of this city made it very, very clear to us that the constant back and forth that happened between council and the mayor really needed to stop, and we all needed to work together. And I told people, I will call people out, and I don't care whether it's my council colleagues or the mayor. And quite frankly, Mayor, this time, I think you're in the wrong. I think you are in the wrong for whatever reason, I don't know. This is not your budget. It's not Michael Dillon Brennan's budget. It is the City of University Heights' budget. Those people sitting there, the residents, and the people that might hear this, that are sitting in their homes, that is their budget, because that's what funds what we do as a city. And it's time we all sat down and put away our little personal, this is mine, and that is yours, and started working together as a group. That means you got to do some given, and we got to do some given. And I'm happy to push for both of those, but I won't push, and I will call you out when people are threatened, because that is bad management, and it is bad management to put us in the position of, you better pass this, because I can't do my job. Word now, and I agree with Mrs. Sacks, I really had to think hard about what would I do about this particular motion? Would I vote for it or against it? But quite frankly, every employee of this city deserves to be paid, and it is the only reason why I would vote for it, and it certainly is not because you think it's the way to budget, because it isn't.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Same day also, anything I'd like to say at this time before we take this to a vote? Saying that, we'll take two votes. First is on the suspension of rules. Mrs. Thomas.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Robb?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And on the main motion?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Robb?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Regrettably, aye.
Very good, motion carriers. Thank you. Next is item C, ordinance 2023-72, authorizing the transfer of funds from the General Fund 100 to the Capital Improvement Fund 400, declaring an emergency. This is on emergency. Mr. Cannon.
Uh, fund to support council approval of various safety forces vehicles and other equipment that was approved last month. As you know, there was not sufficient funding available in the Capital Improvement Fund to cover those purchases. The four-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar transfer from the General Fund was included amongst the appropriation amendments that council approved at the last meeting. This is just effectively making the transaction happen, happen and recording a change to support the expenses.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Is there a motion to approve on emergency?
Some of the downriver decision, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is there a second? Second. Second by Ms. Wise. Any discussion? Saying that, we'll take two votes. First is on suspension of rules. Mrs. Thomas.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Robb?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good, motion carriers. Thank you. Next is item D, ordinance 2023-73, amended codified ordinance chapter two-twenty entitled "Council, Declaring an Emergency." This is on first reading. Mr. McConville.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is an ordinance that is the result of one of the charter amendments that was approved in the November election. In particular, this ordinance addresses the charter amendment that switches the presiding officer for council meeting from the mayor to the vice mayor. The need of this ordinance changes in codified ordinance sections two-twenty oh-five, oh-seven, and oh-eight. We're introducing a concept whereby not only would you appoint a vice mayor each year, but you would also appoint a council pro temp, so that in instances of the absence of the vice mayor, you'd be clear as to run the meeting. If both are absent, you can hold up a pro temp meeting, ad meeting, or a pro temp election ad meeting to choose who's going to run the meeting, but we thought it would be a good idea to at least have a second in place in the event of the vice mayor's absence. One of the questions that has been raised post-election by a number of council members is, who's going to prepare the agenda, and whether there's any additional remuneration that would be paid to the vice mayor for preparation of the agenda. This ordinance does not change anything with respect to who is obligated to prepare the agenda. That responsibility remains in the current version with the mayor, and I want to flesh that out a little further. There is a legal issue in connection with whether the vice mayor can be paid additional funds to accept additional responsibilities for preparation of the agenda. And that legal issue is whether such a remuneration would be considered an interim pay raise for a city council member. We had conversations with the Ohio Ethics Commission in which we asked that question, noting that the vice mayor is not in position that is given to someone for a four-year term. It has a one-year term, expires at the end of each year, and then the organization will meet each year if you elect the vice mayor, without there being, or two years, I'm sorry, each two years, without there being any guarantee as to who might occupy that position in connection with that election. The Ethics Commission was not familiar, and they invited us to apply for an advisory opinion. So before we make any change in terms of who's going to perform the duties to put together the agenda, whether additional remuneration is involved, my suggestion would be that you authorize me to seek an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission so we can make sure that we're not violating the interim pay raise provision. And in concert with that, we can either enact legislation in the short term that clarifies that any proposed pay raise for the vice mayor would not go into effect until such opinion is rendered, or alternatively, you can just wait for the result of that opinion.
Yes, so that was actually a question I had, because in that section two-twenty, listing that the mayor shall prepare the agenda, shall compile, deliver, and complete the agenda. So I guess without the pay raise, are we saying that we would like the mayor to continue to compile and complete the agenda? I get there's a lot of time and effort required for that, but I thought as part of this charter amendment was to allow council to set its agendas as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was contained within the charter. Yeah, I don't think that was contained within the charter language you were saying.
Mr. Kennedy?
I was just going to say that all of us create the agenda. I mean, really, any one of us can, including the mayor, place something on the agenda. I think what ends up happening in practice is that we send it to the mayor, we send it to the clerk of council, and I don't know if Kelly wants to, sorry, the clerk of council wants to respond, that you actually create the agenda.
Yes, I agree. And then I think the mayor, the vice mayor, move over. Some of the other directors have updated this.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely correct. I think the question that I'm raising in context of the remuneration for the vice mayor is who is going to be responsible for performing this task administratively? Which I think as a practical matter, it boils down to working with Kelly to compile the agenda. I can tell you it's a lot of work. It's not a small amount of work to put an agenda together. It's a little bit like heard and cast. The clerk of council will confirm that, I know. And so if, as a body, we're inclined to have the vice mayor perform these duties, I think the thing that I had heard during the course of discussions, I think that occurred within this body, was whilst you should be paying, you don't do that. I don't think you necessarily have to make a change if you're not inclined to. But what I am saying is that if you are inclined to make a change, or you are inclined to pay the vice mayor more money for assuming an additional set of duties that she doesn't currently have, there's an ethics question that has to be answered first.
So I guess to further on that question, this is on first rate reading.
Right.
So how long before we hear back from the Ethics Commission? For, what did you say, we'd have a special analysis or?
Well, they tell us it'll be a couple of months from the date of our submittal. We'd have to be careful about drafting this. No, you want to make sure you're hitting all of the applicable facts so that they don't pine on something that is, you know, contains a material omission. We could put something together relatively quickly and get it to them. It'll take a couple of months, I think, before they're running the advisory meeting.
Just piggybacking on what Mrs. Thomas said. I don't know that the way this will work next year is really all that much different than what we currently do. Mrs. Thomas compiles a draft agenda. She shares it not just with me, but also the vice mayor, with Mr. Kennedy, sometimes various directors, if you know that there are things coming from those departments. And ultimately, I know I get back to Kelly. I believe everybody else does too, with respect to seeing a final version of the agenda. I don't really foresee that changing. Even though I will not be chairing the meetings in the future as mayor, the mayor still would be sponsoring legislation from time to time. The mayor still would want to make sure that legislation gets on the agenda. The mayor still would want to be on that email chain just as the vice mayor up to this point has been. So I don't know how different it will really look.
Mrs. Sacks?
Thank you. I had several comments, but just really talk about the point. I believe, Mayor, you are talking about Mrs. Thomas physically compiling. She's not inputting. And are you? Are you putting like A, B, C, D? Do you actually? You are? Okay. Well, thank you. You should. How long do we continue? I don't know. We're still talking about this whole topic.
I guess the reason I ask, because the whole, you know, when we went to the voters and said, "We would like to have this charter amendment because of all these reasons," one of the reasons we said was to allow the council to set its own agendas. And there were times in the past where maybe political things were put on the agenda that we removed. And that's fine. We have that ability to continue to do that. But if we're creating the agenda, we could probably eliminate some of those pitfalls of, "Oh, Councilman Rock voted to remove this agenda," when it probably wasn't appropriate to put in there to keep it. Maybe it was. But having that ability to set our agendas, I think, is important to align with administration and aligns with what council had put together in their committee retreats. That's just, that's my opinion.
Thank you. I made the way. Mrs. Watson?
Yeah, you know, during the Charter Review Committee, there was lengthy discussion about this. And one of the reasons, and best practices, I think, that the potential switch was to be made was that whoever that vice mayor is, they would be discussing, not just asking for an email, as Mrs. Thomas does. You know, like what's happening now is, Mrs. Thomas said, "You know, I need everything by Wednesday night ideally," right? And then they come in Wednesday or Thursday morning. That vice mayor would be speaking to the directors, if there's any issues, why they want something on the agenda. Maybe this should get held off. Like, as Mr. Rock said, they'd be setting the agenda actively, not passively. And I think that was the change or the intention of the Charter Review Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Watson. Ms. Watson?
I have a question for Mr. McConville. Maybe I missed it, but is there anything in here about paying the vice mayor now?
No, no.
Okay, so to me, we have two things here. Number one, if council wants to make sure the vice mayor is paid, we need to pass a resolution, which we can do by resolution, no? Or a motion to authorize you to look into the ethical question. So that takes care of that. Number two, we already have identified a potential issue with agenda setting that needs to get resolved, even if we're not paying the vice mayor to put it together, where it needs to be clear who is doing, who has control of that agenda, period. Is it the mayor that has control of the agenda or the vice mayor? Because it sort of has flipped it now. And you're right, it's going to be new and uncomfortable for a while until everybody sort of sorts it out. So if we were to pass this, that's not, we're just going to do it the old way until we find out about the other things? Or is somebody asking to make sure that the vice mayor now has control of the agenda? Does that have to get revised in this? That's what I'm trying to find out.
So I have a couple of comments. One is, I don't think, I don't think we should talk about this in terms of control of the agenda. Because what the charter does is it makes it clear that any elected official, whether it's another council or the mayor, has the right to cause an item to be listed on the agenda. So notwithstanding the fact that some of the administrative responsibility may shift if you elected to do that, that legislation, the mayor is still going to have every right to place what he wants on the agenda. And in fact, that's necessary for the smooth operation of the city. He's going to know about things that are happening administratively that need approval, that council members just wouldn't know about. So I don't think, you know, control is the issue. The issue is who is ultimately responsible for compiling the documents and making sure that the clerk has everything that the clerk needs so that she's in a position to send packets out to the members of council and to post the agenda by the time periods that are required.
Third question. If we just leave it as is, with the way it's currently being done, until we get the answer back from the Ethics Commission, we can obviously revise it, right?
Correct. That's right.
Okay. So we wouldn't be going against the charter change for that revision?
No, that's correct.
This is in the administrative code.
That is correct.
So that's changeable. So we can't just leave this as is to start out with, which eliminates the question of the vice mayor getting extra money until we get that answered, and then we can do a revision? Because I got another revision that you see going here.
Okay. The answer's yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Sacks?
Thank you. I'm going to go into order. I've got four things. First, I'm just reading through this. So the first thing is 220.01, regular meetings be in council chambers. The city hall shall be the regularly appointed room, not city property, et cetera. We have no council chambers. Still have not even gotten the budget, which was requested in a public meeting for the dissolution and gutting of council chambers, for which we are homeless. Number two, 220.02, special meetings. I thought last year, this is when we had one, had a special meeting of the council. Notices are delivered to each member in person by telephone and writing, et cetera. I thought that we changed that so it wouldn't be so cumbersome on the clerk of council. So I don't know where that language is.
No, I think you did change that, and I guess it's not in the House.
Yes, please. The House has worked on it.
Okay. So I will make sure that happens. Thank you.
Number three, compared to the vice mayor having more input, I'll call it control, into the agenda and things of importance, which would require her to have interface with the directors. The directors report to the mayor. We just had a lot of discussion about how the mayor is preventing and prohibiting the directors from speaking to council about matters that are basic to council and to role preparing finance. So I'm just wondering if there would ever be, like what we would do to ensure the accessibility of the vice mayor at any time to the directors for the purpose of setting and getting information necessary to create the agenda? I'm not sure what we can put in here to support that and ensure that nothing interferes with that.
There's nothing about the current budgetary process that would interfere with being able to set an agenda.
Okay, I'm not only talking about the budget. I'm talking about any matter of importance to the city to be placed on the agenda and to do research and get current and accurate information in order to present it in an intelligent and appropriate way, to do due diligence, basically, by having access to the directors. Is there some way, a language that allows that to happen? Because they do report to the mayor. He has said, writing to all of us, that if they would breach that on that particular subject, that they would be considered insubordinate and subject to termination. So we can't have that with just a regular agenda item that he might find objectionable for whatever reason, or whatever time. That's what I'm asking the law director. We could have some sort of language that just could show flexibility.
I don't know that that would be consistent with the charter. I mean, the mayor would be the phone through which you would obtain information about what's needed administratively. And of course, you have access to your department heads at a meeting, I'm sorry, at a meeting, at your meetings. And that's part of the problem, preventing directors from attending meetings.
Right.
But they are going to be present at council meetings. I will mind that you're able to compel your attendance at your other committee meetings. I don't think you need a change in the law. That's my opinion. I've rendered that your opinion.
Well, let's see what happens. Hopefully, that it won't be an issue. And one minor thing, 220.11, the formatting is off. It's like three in the front. It's at the end of B from the prior subject. If you look at 220.11 committees, it goes A 1 through 7, and then B. And at the end of B, just the formatting of 220.11, or the business is tucked into the prior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Ms. Weiser?
I noticed in 220.173, for some reason, the western end of the city is not raised with postings of anything. Apparently, we don't count sometimes. But it could be because we used to post them at KFC, and then KFC got torn down. However, we do have, we've got the Euro Motor Vehicles, we've got Dollar Store, we've got Anytime Fitness, which all would be good posting places. So those of us that live at the west end might actually be able to read the materials that get posted elsewhere in the city. So I would strongly suggest that we have somebody from the west end.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Mr. King?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask, Mr. McConville, when you do go back and make these, update these changes, could we get a red line copy of it?
Yeah, I saw your email. I'll send it to you again. I created a red line. So what I'm looking at is a red line that I sent out. It appears on my computer screen.
Oh, we got it. We got it. Yeah, we just got it as part of the agenda in the agenda packet, and all of those, all that markup is lost.
I don't know if that's an electronic issue or...
Yes, it's something that hears itself.
I'll send it again. It's been there. It's a red line.
It's seven pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you could just PDF your red line and then send it over as a PDF.
One other comment, just to piggyback off of what Ms. Weiser said. You know, we're talking about physical posting of documents. I'm not saying we need to do it now, but we should probably update this ordinance to say that it wants to be posted in a certain location online where people could view those as well prior to them being, you know, going to the codified website.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Ms. Weiser?
Mr. King, are you suggesting we stop physically posting? Oh, okay.
Just in addition?
In a very stupid way. People went to KFC and read something, and then would ask people, "Why did that happen?" because they had no clue what was going on at council. So I would hope that we continue to do that. Sometimes paper is good.
Thank you.
Mayor, since this is on first reading, do we then need a motion to authorize the law director to reach out to the Ohio Ethics Commission for an opinion about a potential salary or payment, potential payment to the vice mayor for agenda preparation? Is that correct?
Would you prefer to have a motion as opposed to...
That's lovely. So I was on the same, yes. All right.
I guess that's a motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Ms. Weiser to authorize the law director to seek an advisory opinion from the Ohio Ethics Commission on the subject of additional compensation for the position of vice mayor as the presiding officer of the body and any role the vice mayor may have in additional role that the vice mayor may have in the agenda preparation with respect to whether it falls within the general provision as we're determining raises. Sad to...
One second.
Cap that up.
Probably a little long, but...
It's a little long.
Kelly, did it?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kelly. Got a motion by Ms. Weiser, a second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion on the motion?
Mrs. Thomas, who called?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good motion carriers.
Very good motion carries. Thank you. And however, that shakes out, I think it's going to be a good thing for the city council to be presiding. If there's no further discussion on the proposed ordinance that's on first reading, we will consider the first reading hack. Does anybody else have anything to say about it before we go to... I need motion enter executive session for the purpose of discussing legal proceedings of personnel and real estate matters. I'm not aware of any matters that we need to go into executive session about this evening. So we will move on then to the reports of standing committees and the taking of action their own, building housing. Mrs. Wise.
There will be a meeting before the council meeting on 12/18 at 6:00 PM. We will be discussing with Mr. Cheetham the potential for raising permit fees and the Safe Bill contract. And if there is time, we hopefully will continue to discuss exterior inspections with Mr. Anklebrach. Sorry about that. And hopefully, they can attend and talk to us.
Very good. Thank you. Community outreach, Mr. Kennedy.
Mayor, I have no report, but I just wanted to see if, going back to building and housing, we have representatives from, from Safe Bill tonight. I didn't know if they wanted to say anything or introduce themselves to...
We did. We did. I have no objection to that, Mr. Cheetham. I know that Lauren and Al here take a moment.
This is Al Green, Alan Green. He's our regional account manager, and he's out of Illinois. He was in town today and tomorrow, meeting some clients. And this is Lauren Berry. She is from Mentor. She is your account manager, started in September. So she's the one that will be here next council meeting, housing meeting, to talk about the contract. And since they were in town and he was staying next door on a hotel, they said, "Let's go to council with him." So this is a foot call. I don't get it, but anyway. So anyway, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. But we, Lauren and I, will be here on the 18th, and I will have the new fee schedule. It's 90% complete from two council and later the next Monday deal up. So you have a week for all of you to be looking at it before...
Greatly appreciated. Mr. Cheetham, thank you for all your help. I'm looking forward to talking with you about the contract.
Al, it's always great to know how tall somebody who's ever seen the month of the meeting, you just don't know.
That's what I said. Maybe it's the first time that he first... I always perceive him as...
I bet.
And he walks out of the hallway of whatever some county, and I looked at him, and I said, "I thought you were about this far."
Well, the first time I met Mr. Anklebrach in person, let me tell you. All right. Mr. Kennedy, do you have anything to say?
No, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Economic development, Mr. Ross.
Yes, Mayor. I don't want to steal Mr. Drucker's thunder. She gave an excellent report on our November 29 meeting, which was in the Economic Development Committee with ZOMCO. One thing I really want to address that I was so impressed by was the efforts made for Morelville Center Road for potential rezoning for mixed use along that corridor, housing, dense housing in the mid-block, whether it be townhomes or multifamily. You mentioned that, those corners for mixed use. But, and we saw a rendering of a mass diagram of what that could look like, and I was pretty excited about that. So one thing I wanted to mention, though, if other council members shared that same enthusiasm, there's a very important meeting on Thursday, it's the Planning Commission meeting, where the applicant is looking to rezone four parcels mid-block from a two-family district to use seven local retail districts for the use of a gas station. I'm not aware of very many gas stations located mid-block. They're typically situated on corners for easy access in and out, since this is an automobile use. So pay particular attention, come to the meeting if there is a recommendation by the Planning Commission to come to plan, or to come to council, you will hear from them next. So be good here at that meeting. It is on Thursday, December 7, at 7:00 PM, right here. And one thing I just want to note, because we were looking at rezoning that for a very special use, what the applicant is looking to do is to rezone this, and there would be houses on all three sides of that gas station and across the street. So really, on all four sides of the gas station would be homes. And this is something that I mentioned when we waived zoning at the Planning Commission. You two could have a gas station next to your home, except we set precedent on waived zoning. So it happened sooner than I thought. It'll be here Thursday.
Mr. McCallvo, did you carry the address that last week? Because I don't want the public to get misled about what happened with the Planning Commission.
As I opined, I provided a memorandum to council on the waiver of zoning was in lieu of variances and was intended to be less of a give to the applicant than the variances would be. And the rationale was that it will be prudent to provide a waiver as opposed to a variance if, in fact, variances ran with the land in all circumstances. And it was qualified with a promise from the law department to research that last issue. Do variances automatically run with the land in all instances? And what we learned through our research is that municipal bodies are able to temporarily limit variances. So the waiver was not intended to be anything that was in access of a variance. It was intended to be something less than that. And I think that's enough said.
And I think when it comes to council after ARB, the idea was that it would be presented by the law department as opposed to...
Correct. That's the premise. The recommendation from the law department would be to consider variances, since you can temporarily limit them, and kind of with that, or instance, you could limit that to the duration of a special use.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCallvo. So just as, to reaffirm, this is for a rezoning application, this is to rezel.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, the rest of what you were saying, I would... And, you know, I think it is a fair thing for the body to consider, and for the city to consider, that as you're looking at what Morelville Center could be, does this proposal fit in that vision you may have? And that is something to consider. And you may or may not all have the same reason. This was your report.
That was my report. Thank you.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mrs. Wise, by this.
Yes, so I will not put our employees in a situation where they will not get paid. And based on that, I will pull a series of budget meetings starting in January, first meeting with directors, and the next two meeting with the rest of the finance committee. The first will be our regular directors meeting with our lay finance committee and finance committee, and then we will have a series of two more, as we have in the past, a minimum of two more. I want to get those dates on the calendar now, so we don't run into that March 31st deadline. Only gives us about six weeks to discuss a budget. So that will be going out this week.
Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Mr. Green is not present. Is there anybody from the Recreation Committee who would carry a report? Do you believe there is a Recreation Committee meeting scheduled for, is it the 12th?
Yes, the evening, tomorrow.
Evening, the 12th. Okay. Very good. We will then have that meeting. Anything else from the committee? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Safety, Teresa Marshall. Mrs. Marshall.
No, Mayor.
Service utilities.
There was a service and utilities committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow, which has been canceled. Going forward, we're looking to something in January, has not been pulled yet, but I communicated with someone from the SES consultants regarding the rubbish assessment they were doing, and they had started meeting and met with the administration and hoped to have something to present to committee at least in January. Also, I'm waiting for the engineer to be hired. We have several things of importance that have to do with engineering, service utilities wise, and so look forward to starting to work. And then when we have a city engineer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Glad to hear that. The CS has been contacted. We will need their report.
I was contacted.
Okay. Well, when we contacted SES, we asked them to contact you. So whichever way it happened, we're glad that it did. We hope we'll have a meeting soon. You do need their report for the budget. Thank you. Committee of the whole, Mrs. Wise.
Yes, it's a meeting on December 12, right before the Recreation meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mrs. Wise. Are there any reports of special committees in the taking of action their own? Saying none, are there any? Is there any unfinished for miscellaneous business? Saying none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So...
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Sacks, sent by Mr. Ross. Mrs. Thomas, we called her.
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks? Aye. Mrs. Wise? Aye. Mrs. Wise? Aye.
And we're adjourned. It's the end of the day. Thank you.